There. Okay, I would like to welcome everybody to our online town hall meeting, where we are meeting and greeting the baronial candidates who have put their hand up to become the new Baron and Baroness of Rowaney. The format for this evening, I will shortly pass over to Stig and Christiana, who will have a short little talk about where things are in the process and any other bits and pieces of news that may be relevant. In regards to questions tonight, where possible, if people could send them to me via a direct message through Zoom, that will allow us to most best streamline things so that people don't try and answer or ask two questions at the same time. After that, we may have some time for questions from the floor. Between Stig and getting to questions, I will get our candidates just to tell us a little bit about themselves and what their plans or priorities might be as being Baron and Baroness of Rowaney. So with that, I will pass over to Stig and Christiana.
Okay, thanks, JC.
Okay, the first thing I'm going to do is acknowledge the custodians of the land on which we are, on which we stand tonight or sit tonight. In particular, those of the Walla Medical, Baromedical and Walaga clans in the Eora Nation. So, welcome to everybody tonight. It is good to see you, even though it's quite small online tonight. The only thing I have to really add, Penny has, England has been really good at letting you know where everything is up, up to and what the process will be. After a lot of to-ing and fro-ing with dates and conflicting times with what we can do with giving the incoming Baronage, whoever that may be, time to get things together and all of that sort of thing. Plus, the, the number of events that are coming up. We'd like to confirm that changeover will be the 22nd of October, given this whole process goes through and there are no problems. And we're not 100% certain of that because we were 100% certain that would happen last time around and we know what happened. So, so given all goes well, 22nd of October will be the changeover date. Anything else from you?
Yep, I'll just run through the process very briefly. Okay, as everybody would know, we're on the timeline with meet and greets. There's this one and then the final one is next Wednesday and that will be quite focused on Stowe. Okay, there's been the commentary period from 20th of June to 10th of July. And that will be on a Google form. The Majesties and Grace England will have access to that, no one else. And if anybody can't manage the online version of it, a paper copy can be made available if needed. Following that, between 11th and 24th of July, there'll be consideration of the commentary and announcement of the successful candidates. Okay, so with the questions tonight, just a reminder that there's 90 minutes of Q and A from last week that JC posted up. So candidates may feel like referring people back to that if necessary. And if you've seen it, then please don't feel obliged to repeat questions from them. Okay, oh yes, just wanted to highlight the needs commentary from everybody. It's really important for making the process complete successfully. So that's really all from me. And if I can hand over to the candidates and ask them to introduce themselves.
And we'll start with Juliana and Evan Jalal first and then go to Sigvalda. Then go to Wolf Sigis, he's arrived, if that's okay with everybody.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Juliana. Per our meeting last week, I've been doing this reenactment thing for close to 25 years now. And I didn't even remember what I said last week, to be honest. Last week was a long time ago. Here we are, it's, this is, this is my hobby, this is my passion. And if you want a more full answer, please refer to last week's meeting.
Yeah, I'm Evan Jalal. I've been doing this for longer than she has. As I said last week, I started up in Dismal Fogs, then moved down to Rowaney. I've been down in Rowaney for about 20 years now. I've held offices from a local through to a society level. Started with combat archery, then discovered fencing and went on from there. Ended up with a Laurel and Master of Defence as a result. And as Juliana said, I think we're a lot more. Yeah, have a look at last week as well, see what I've missed.
Yep.
Sigvald and Ida.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Sigvald. I, I was gonna say grew up through the College of St Ursula, which is, which should be quite, quite the achievement. I've been doing this since about 2011. I've held a plethora of baronial college and now Kingdom offices. I was Kingdom Shurridge and I'm currently Kingdom Fencing Marshal, which is an exciting opportunity. We are currently in Politicopolis, but most active in Barony of Rowaney. Coming up for events all the time within Stowe Tavernalia. And happy to answer any specific questions, but answered a lot of, described me myself last time, so Ida.
Yes, I like Sigvald. First of all, hello, I'm Ida. I like Sigvald started with the Barony through the College of St Ursula. I've, I don't have nearly as many event stewarding or officer roles behind me as a lot of the other candidates do. But I tend to like to help out a lot, sort of more in the background, helping out at events where there's, you know, if something needs to be done, I'm always ready to lend a hand, however that needs to happen, whether that's in the kitchen or tidying up or helping serve, things like that. Yeah, at the moment, I'm interested in a lot of things, including fibre craft, started doing tablet leaving quite recently, which I'm enjoying greatly. But always open to try new things. And that's one of the things that I greatly enjoyed that the SCA is this opportunity to learn and try new things all the time. So, yeah.
Awesome, thank you very much. Okay, I do not have anybody waiting in the waiting room. So I'm going to say that Wolf Sig is not with us at this point in time. So I'll move to the first question that I have received via direct message. This is a question to both sets of candidates that are here with us this evening. And I'll let you decide who would like to go first in answering that. Just use the little raise hand toggle to say if you want to go first. And I'll work it out that way. The question is a two-parter. How do you plan to make the Barony inclusive towards newcomers who may have difficulty in connecting with others and members who may have disengaged for a variety of reasons? What strategies might you employ?
I guess we'll go first by largely by virtue, I think, Juliana, if you're trying to talk, you're on mute. And also, I don't know where the raise hand icon is on the iPad, so.
It's down in reactions usually, but it can be tricky to find on a tablet.
It's okay, we found it.
So this is sort of a two-part question. One is the sort of how do we get newcomers involved who might have challenges making friends or relating to people? We do this quite well, I think, already. There are a range of people who, the SCA is home to a lot of, dare I say it, nerds, who, who might not be the most always socially maybe socially challenged. I know I was, especially when I, when I joined, I like to think the society helped with that. It really partly depends on where the newcomer in question is coming in from. It's, it's probably easier with the college and making sure that college stays strong because you have that sort of pre-built social circle already in there and helping that grow and develop. But also making sure that you have those connections to, to other members of the Barony and other members of the society who can help the collegian in question make the next step. Make sure we don't, you know, drop them out when, when they graduate. For people who are in the Barony more broadly, it's important to, while you don't have that sort of built-in social circle of the college, having those activities and helping people build those connections with generally through the activities and the things that we love and things that we do, making sure as baronial candidates or successful, hopefully, being approachable and helping those people, you know, sometimes there are people at events that are sitting alone or just a couple of people are not really able to engage. And I've always tried to, you know, go, hello, how are you doing? And sort of join in, try and get them to join in with activities or just, you know, sit down and have a chat. For the people that have drifted away, this is something that I've been speaking with a few of the sort of closer founding generations already. One thing from a perspective of someone who works in an environment where there is a lot of people leaving in general, the idea of not like, you know, not like a, like a formal exit interview and sit down and why did you leave, but trying to work out, having a chat with them going, you know, you're, you haven't, we haven't, we've noticed you haven't been participating as much recently. Is any, everything okay? Sort of trying to make that intervention before people drop off fully. But also, if people do say we're missing out on various things, they're unlikely to be the only ones who think that, you know, it would be great to have, I miss the days when we had, you know, the sort of super fancy high event, or I miss the days when we had more combat archery at, in school fields. And trying to, if we can bring those people back through bringing back the things that they love.
Okay, thank you very much. Juliana and Evan Jalal.
Tough question in some respects. For us, we've come from groups that aren't Rowaney. And one of the things that we both got in the groups that we started with was we were put in contact with an experienced member to actually help us sort of understand what was going on, moving through, getting a feel for what the SCA was about and helping us actually find what we were interested in as well. So we think that's one thing that can be really, really useful for newcomers is basically having a pool of people that they can draw on and maybe having an individual contact for newcomers who needs to set it up to actually make it so that they don't feel like they're, they're on their own. I think that's the hardest problem for a new person coming in. It's if they don't know anyone in the group, they've got no contact person, they've got no idea what they can do. For the people we're losing or disengaging, some of it has been the, over the years, it's, I've run into people who are disengaged from the SCA. And some cases, it's they've left uni, gotten jobs, don't have time. In other cases, it's been, they've had families and there's been nothing for their families. So having raised a son in the SCA, I know how important it is to have activities for the kids of members. Because it's always a fight if you want to go to an event and your kids are saying, I don't want to go, I don't want to go, it's boring. And then they make your life miserable, which then in turn means you stop enjoying events. So there's a, there's a, there's a kernel of truth there that we actually think that we need to start looking at. It's not just the college students where we need to get our members from. We need to start thinking about where do we, how do we support families that are interested in this as a hobby? And that's something that we can reach out to other groups like Oakway and Politicopolis, who are doing that very successfully. So they've got some, they've got some successes in those sorts of areas. And that's some, that the two groups we were thinking we'd be reaching out and going, okay, so what are you doing to get your families in and get your newcomers in to help them, support them so that we can use some of those ideas in Rowaney?
I actually have something to add to that. Last Monday, I believe it was Gui who posed the question about households. And households, while there is a, Rowaney is a very household-centric Barony. And this is where the, the dropping away of members is a really good place where those who are in households, where households can come to the front, especially on those where, where people do drop away for a reason. Sometimes if you are in a position where you're not seeing a lot of people regularly, you don't notice that dropping away, but those households may, or people who, who are associated across multiple households may. So that's where the household structure is really valuable for those people who are disengaging. Also being open, there may be other reasons for disengagement. So where, yes, you do have, life happens, but life happens for a very number of reasons. And one, and I can use this one, one as an example, a very good friend of ours has dropped away for nothing more than she is the sole carer for her very elderly and for our mother. So we regularly reach out to her and we've started doing some training again in her backyard just to try and keep her engaged with the, with an aspect of the SCA that she loves. So facilitating that too. So just as a point, if you do have someone who has dropped away or needs to reach out, please don't hesitate to reach out to them. You may just keep a member engaged from now on.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next question that I have received. This one might be considered a bit of a a lead-in for when we have our Stowe session. As Stowe is a very important part of the Barony. How will you incentivize non-Stowe baronial members to participate in Stowe activities?
Sorry, I'm just gonna interrupt here just to let people know that Wolf Sig is unwell and is unlikely to make it tonight.
Thank you.
If anyone would like, would anyone like to field that one first?
Still thinking.
Okay, might jump in here. So Stowe is close, so is Western Sydney and Stowe is far west. But Stowe is also, to an extent, not nearly as far west as some people sort of may think it is. By which I mean that there's a lot of events that are closer on sort of east-west line than there are north-south or in sort of southwest Sydney. Having spoken and been involved with some of the Stowe people for, for a while, there is a perception that there is a fairly artificial divide that you go to Rowaney events or you go to Stowe events. And to an extent, it will be a, a part of, if you build it, they will come. Where we're going to Stowe Tavernalia, we're planning to go to Stowe, Stowe Ash in the Park, I think is its current name, in, in August. There are some events where you sort of need to show that example of continuing on. And it's not, and showing, you know, from, from personal example, that it's not all the Stowe agents are all the way out there. It's actually Paramat is pretty, pretty close to a lot of people. And we're going to help out there with Winterfest and that sort of. It's not Paramat, so Winterfest is much further western Paramat, but showing that, you know, Sydney is all connected at a personal demonstrable level. Helping to bring collegions around. Sometimes if it's only just a small group of people, having someone who's not normally in that sort of demographic can help other people who are, who are considering it, oh, okay, there's actually, you know, people like me. So trying to speak and individually call on people to attend these kind of events. And we have a couple of other Stowe plans, but I don't want to spoil the, spoil the surprise for, for next week.
The other thing I think that it seems, at least that was my experience being in Rowaney, is that there's this like mental divide. I think for a lot of people that it's, oh, it's Rowaney and it's Stowe and they are two separate things, whereas like it's, it's not really. And I, I want to try and sort of bridge that or take down that barrier of, oh, well, you know, it's, this Stowe is putting on an event, but it's not a Rowaney event, so I won't go to it. Whereas that's, that shouldn't really be the case. Like it's just as easy to go to those sorts of events. It's just as important, it's just as engaging to go to those sorts of events. It's, you know, it's another event that you can go to and spend time with people and spend time doing the things that you enjoy. It just, it seems really odd to me that there's this sort of mental divide that I just would like to sort of work on taking down a bit so that it seems less daunting, I guess. You know, Stowe's not far away, they're not aliens living out there, you know. They're, they do the same things as we do, they enjoy the same things as we do. You know, we're all just trying to have a good time.
One Barony. Very true. Juliana and Evan Jalal.
Well, referring back to Monday last week, there was a, it was a question about accessibility. And I think Stowe falls a little bit into the accessibility arena where for a number of people, it is, is inaccessible just because of its location. And while it's not very far from a train station, there are bus routes and things like that. Not everyone can afford the public transport to Stowe, which last time I looked was about $11 each way. And we mentioned a potential for things like, like a little minivan or carpooling kind of thing. So if there is people, if there are people going to an event and they do have room in their car, maybe a place, set up some sort of event, part of the website or is a Facebook event specifically for those who are interested in going, where we can facilitate rides for those who don't always have access or the funds to get public transport, which is in realist, realistically, just getting more and more expensive.
Because we had something like that with Dismal Fogs when I was up there. Because getting to any event in Rowaney, it was at least an hour. So it was always, if someone was going, we're always putting our hands up saying, I'm going out to the Stowe event, does anyone need a lift? Because getting to the event wasn't the problem, it was getting home afterwards. And that's usually the one that kills people is like that go, I don't want to be coming home, 10 o'clock at night on public transport. So that's where factoring into our plans, we were going, okay, if we're going to be doing baronial road trips, why not making into, inside the Barony part of that project? So yeah, that's, that's something we can do, but it's, I just find it weird that people go, Stowe is so far away. But that's just me.
Very fair. There may be a follow-on to that question. I'm just confirming with the person who asked whether they would feel that you, the, because both sets of candidates, I think, partially answered what the follow-on question was going to be. So I might, we might come back to this topic in a little bit. And in the meantime, I'll move on. So the next question. Here in Rowaney, one of the prevailing attitudes seems to be, if you have an idea that you think is good, but don't have the knowledge, skills or capacity to make it happen, then don't expect others to support your idea. Given that we have members of the Barony who have chronic illnesses, this can often be a frustrating attitude. Do you see a place for thinkers as well as doers in Rowaney? And if so, how do you hope to help them to feel included and valued? Given some issues with people finding the raise hand button, I'm going to allow Evan Jalal and Juliana to have first bite at this cherry. And so I'll give them the time to formulate a response before going to them.
Yeah, I've got it. Okay, so I actually have had this conversation quite recently. Yes, there is space for the thinkers. We need ideas people, but equally, we also need people to sometimes be the muscle for the idea people. So again, this is back to that buddy system where if you do have someone with a great idea for an event, but don't have the physical capacity for it. I'm all for it. I'm all for helping out, facilitating, finding the right people to assist on that physical capacity and to sometimes even the actual book skills as well. Because just because a thinker has a great idea doesn't necessarily mean they have the entire skillset. So forming a, a working group for that event or that idea to be realized. But absolutely for the thinkers, we, we need your ideas. Because you know, sometimes some of us are just totally unimaginative.
Yeah. The only thing I would add to that is, one of the things I think people forget is we have a baronial officer corps. And that baronial officers corps there is to support what the Barony wants to do. So if someone comes up with the idea, we want to do this, they can always reach out to, to people like the marshals and the heralds and the lists officers and say, we want to run this event, but I need help running it. And I think that's where people are have been reticent to actually talk to the baronial officers or the canton or college officers and say, look, this is what we want to do, but we're gonna need help doing it. I think the, the kind of trapped in that group think that you actually have to do everything yourself. And that's going to be a key part for us is actually making people aware that the officers aren't there just to do the reporting, they're there to support the Barony.
Thank you very much. Sigvald and Ida.
I actually think it's really interesting, this idea that there's no space for thinkers. Like in no aspect of a lot of the things that we do in the SCA, does everyone have the skills for everything? You know, if someone wants to run an event, they might not be able to run the kitchen and that's okay. We don't expect them to. We don't necessarily, we don't expect them to run the ANS classes. We don't expect them to do the marshaling or to run the lists. You know, everyone has different skills, everyone has different abilities. And I don't see why, because you can do one aspect, but not the other, doesn't mean that you can't participate in creating something or making something happen. Because that happens anyway. I'm perfectly capable of, you know, being the muscle and also having the ideas that I might not have the skills for something, but that doesn't mean that I can't help make that happen. You know, we have these networks, we have people. You know, we have these networks. We have people around us. Like you say, people in, you know, Baronial Officer roles that you can contact BMBs, people in the college or households, you know, there's peers, you know, there's so many people out there and we don't, this idea that maybe you have the ability to gain those skills, but you don't have them now, like you've got to start somewhere. And so even if all you're doing is, you know, bringing the ideas forward, like someone's got to do it. You know, we can't all have all of the skills, all of the time, all of the ability, all of the time. There's some things that I technically have the ability to have the skills for, but I don't have the skills for. That's okay. You know, we can still make these things happen. And I think that that's one of the things that we I actually do think that we do a pretty good job of having these networks of people that we can talk to and ask for help with. Just, yeah.
It's if I feel that the Baronage is the sort of key point. While you've got the officers and they're there to support the Barony, I feel it's kind of the role of the BMB to be that center point where someone has an idea. We should be approachable. We should be able to, you know, come to the Baronage as we, as we currently can. And have that idea disseminated forth, you know, oh, you've got this idea, but not sure how to do it, or you physically can't, you mentioned, the question mentioned chronic illness. Putting people in contact or with the people who can from that central Baronial Point. As someone who's been the sort of brute force in ignorance at a whole number of events, this is something where so many people on the SCA and the Barony can really reach into and often do. And it's also if it did come to sort of my attention that there were these people that didn't feel that they could undertake something, whether because they didn't have the skills or they did have a chronic illness and they were, you know, incapable of doing something like this. Those be the sort of people that I'd also want to reach out to. We, we had, you know, a previous question about people who drop off and there are a lot of people who I've seen, unfortunately, while I've been in the SCA, who've developed chronic illnesses and are then unable to continue playing the game that we love. And those are the sort of people where if we can just render a little bit more assistance, maybe they can still participate and that's somewhere where we can really lean in on that as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the next question, which comes to us all the way from Redburn. Distance is obviously a big issue for the members of Rowanee who live out in the far, far, far west. Redburn would be interested with working with Rowanee more to try and get some additional interaction between them and Rowanee Central. Another two-part question. Do you have any ideas on how we might be able to do this? And the follow-up to that would be, would you be willing to work with Redburn to help organize things?
Sorry, firstly, JC, could I just ask? Just because we're having some sort of audio issues on there.
I will put the, I can put it into text for you. Let's go copy and send to everybody and paste. And there we go. The question is in the text. Minus my attempts at entertaining everybody. Okay, Sigvold and Eda have their hand up, so I'm going to jump to them.
Sorry, Mr. Teacher, sorry, I was waiting to be fun. Redburn, the second question, I think, is, is the easy one where it's like, yes, I mean, very much so. We are, we spoke at the previous session about we are a a Barony of many groups and households. We are a kingdom of many Baronies and Cantons and Shires and Hamlets and Colleges. And we really want to build out and reach out. Whether those be, you know, those sort of talent sharing projects we spoke about earlier. I would love to have an event that was sort of co-hosted or co-run. I think that would be a really fun and useful project to do, sort of maybe on the opposite side of the year to Redburn War. To go like, yes, Redburn is far away, but it's not as far away as, you know, it's, it's no Anyala, it's no Inglegard. And we, having that sort of co-run event to help potentially people who are interested in learning from both groups, learn from the other group, to have that sort of halfway point. And this would also be, you know, events out Far West, the kind of project where it would be, hi, we're going, who else is going? Do we need to have the minivan sort of idea that Juliana and Evangel have, have had? How do we bring people along? Not just sort of go, here's the event. Notice, take it or leave it, or it's sort of taking people to travel along with you, both physically, but also that sort of mental journey of drawing the different groups together.
I think it's also for us, it's, it's an interesting question about, you know, the distance, how far things away various places are. You know, we don't live in central Rowanee. And so any distance for us is it's still, you know, it's not necessarily any easier for us to get to central Rowanee than it would be to get to, you know, Western Sydney and Stow or out to Redburn. Like it's, you know, it's for us, it's I don't think that there would be any sort of additional hurdle for us to be engaged with those sorts of projects and events. It's certainly something that we're very interested in considering, you know, our situation about being engaged with places that aren't just central Rowanee, you know, being engaged with Politt, being engaged with Redburn, being engaged with Morden Vale. And making sure that, you know, people are, feel like it's more feasible and accessible to get to these events and participate with people from these different areas. I mean, especially considering that, you know, if there's things that are online, we can participate online. If there's, you know, wanting people to wanting to be in person. You know, we're big advocates of, it's not, you know, generally it's not that hard to travel, you know, we're always happy to help people along. There's, there's a lot of options. I don't necessarily have any specific ideas of how to also, you know, an event that would be, I hadn't really thought about it, but there's definitely something that would be very keen to, to help with. I'm sure that a lot of people have ideas and it's just not, yeah.
It might, it might be a useful point to sort of draw back to that previous point where other people in Redburn who have the kind of idea that we can then execute, but we're also just in a really useful position. You know, we're driving up to Stow for, for one day to an event. Showing other people that, you know.
It's easy. We can travel. Have car will travel.
Thank you, Sigvold and Eda. Juliana and Evangel.
It's coming from where I started, it's an interesting question for me because I know there's a group halfway between Rowanee Central and Redburn. So, and a lot of that group is in the upper mountains Lithgow area. So it's kind of like, they've got a support that's halfway there already. And they've got Rowanee Central and then there would be Politt and then there would be the possibility of Morden Vale that's in a relatively similar distance area. It's kind of, it's maybe it's understanding what they're trying to do locally, because I've got to admit, anytime something's come up for Redburn, for me, it's been a matter of bad timing. I've always been booked out and I've never been able to get out there to do anything with Redburn. But yeah, but it's like any of the groups, we're always happy to help support them and do whatever we need to do, but it's I'm kind of questioning why they're focusing on Rowanee Central when they do actually have people closer that might be able to provide better support than Rowanee Central can. Similar to the way where as a Barony, we had to say to Oakway, look, you guys are much closer to Politicopolis than Rowanee. Why aren't you talking to Politicopolis? And then they did actually move from Rowanee to Politt. So there are precedents for getting support from closer groups. And I don't know some of the historical reasons behind this, but that's, that's just sort of thinking at the moment.
Postcodes, okay.
Oh, okay.
Possible future project, perhaps we.
That makes sense. In the meanwhile, it's all about coming always back to accessibility. For me, usually Redburn War has fallen on some really big projects for work and leave for anything has been cancelled. Again, I had to demand tomorrow off to go what to what is now Great More Than War alternate. So honestly, I've, and I've never been to Dubbo. I do want to go. This sounds like a project, but it's always back to that accessibility. How do we work to get people to support the, those far-flung and regional rural areas? So yeah, I, this is one I'd actually like to think more about. This is a little bit more than a postcode and it's a little bit more than a five-hour drive. And I think requires more attention than what we can give it here. But it's definitely a nice project to have. A pleasure, Karen.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Okay, next one. I think some of this has been addressed in some previous questions, but I think it does dive straight into one, one thing in particular, hones in on something in particular that is worth mentioning. So how do you feel that you can make yourselves a way for shyer or more introverted people to be able to ask for assistance without feeling like they are a burden? So this is a bit of a talk about your strengths. Juliana and Evangel.
Okay, so introverts and those shy people who have trouble working up the courage to approach, this is what your BMB do. We are here at, your BMB are here at appropriate times. Writing is always a good way of putting your ideas down in a form that you can go away and think about and come back to. And when you feel happy, you can send that into the Barony Gmail address. Direct messaging, if people have got phone numbers or Messenger, Facebook, that's less of an idea, but it's also a way of reaching out, especially if there is that interactive issue. But always write your ideas or questions down. It gives you time to think about them and how you are going to approach, but I prefer that kind of thing in writing or being pulled away and spoken to in a one-on-one situation. I'm even a fan of handwritten notes at things, you know, just stick a note on my bag and I'll come back and get it. I've seen those before. So yeah, that's one way of reaching out.
From my side, it's like, I am one of those introvert people. And for me, the SCA has been really good in that perspective. I might be an introvert, but I'm also curious. And one of the things I've found is if you start asking someone about what they're doing, you will generally get the, well, that's the red button. And they will start talking to you about what they're doing because people generally love what they're doing in the CIA and they want more people to love it. So it's just, I think it's one of those things as BMB, making people aware that it's if you're curious about something, it's okay to ask if you can ask the questions. And maybe that's the, the important part is just making people aware that it's okay to ask if you're curious. But you may actually just have to understand that sometimes people are just busy and they don't have time to answer you. Just making people aware of that side.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Sigvold and Eda.
So one of the things that we would actually be quite interested in sort of implementing, if we were successful in this, is a sort of a way of talking to us informally. So it doesn't have to be, you know, a super well-thought-out written email. You know, you don't have to have a full idea, just, you know, we want to be at, people to be able to come and approach us. Just very informally at events, you know, we, we enjoy going around and talking to people at events, you know, that's one of the things that we would like to be able to do. Is just chat to the populace and just have an opportunity to ask them about what they're doing and they can ask us. And just make it very normal that we're available, where, you know, if we're around doing these sorts of things, feel free, come up to us, talk to us. It doesn't have to be a big formal thing. It can just be, oh, I was just wondering about, you know, I saw you doing this or whatever. And just making it very low pressure so that it's to take away that sort of intimidation factor, I think. Of, oh, you know, how do I bring something up to, you know, the people who sit up the front and wear the pointy hats, you know, just make it really, try and make it as less intimidating as possible.
The idea is sort of, and this is something that I think both, all, all sets of candidates have spoken to to an extent is building that culture of accessibility. Where we've got, you know, some ideas that encourages where you've got your high table and maybe after a while you have sort of empty chairs in front of that table to sort of encourage. And that's not going to encourage the shyer people to come up there, but it shows it's a symbol that these sort of people are approachable. Reaching out directly to people who you see, you know, at events you see that the wallflower is sort of standing there shy and not wanting to engage necessarily because they might not feel comfortable. And approaching them and making sure that they feel happy and safe and comfortable. And also with the ideas, just it's, it's okay. It doesn't have to be a fully formed idea. If you've got, you know, half an idea or just some, some small little brain nugget you want to, you want to share with us, I'd love to hear it. We can, you know, I can, I can follow up with that later on if they'd be feel more comfortable at another venue online or, you know, phone or Discord or in person at another event, but it doesn't have to be all at once.
I think the other thing that I'd be interested in exploring is that if people have something that they want to bring up to us, but they are intimidating, intimidated by talking to the BMB, that maybe it's an idea of making it more sort of standardized to talk to someone else who can bring it to us. You know, that it doesn't have to be direct. If that's a bit much, I, I know that when I first joined the SCA, that sort of thing, I would never have wanted to, you know, talk to the BMB. I think it was just very intimidating. But if I could have spoken to someone who was, who seemed a bit more sort of on my level, I think that would have been much, it would have felt more accessible to me to have that sort of engagement.
Okay. Thank you, everyone there. So I've now reached the end of submitted questions. I think we can allow for a few minutes if anybody would.
I think we can allow for a few minutes if anybody would like to ask any questions directly of the candidates.
Will Sitch has just come online. It might be worth putting some of those questions to Will Sitch.
Let's, let me just scroll back up through my text messages here. Okay. And we said another one come through.
Will Sitch, are you able to put your video on by any chance? And are you able to turn mute off so that you can answer questions? Looks like Will Sitch might be having some problems, so just give him a couple, just give him a minute or so. If not, we'll have to find another option.
There you go. We are unmuted, I hope. Yep, coming through very faintly.
Will Sitch, do you have to turn your sound up?
Hang on. Can you hear me?
Yep, coming through.
Oh, good.
Okay. So I've scrolled back to the top. So question number one for tonight was about plans to make the Barony inclusive towards newcomers. So Will Sitch, how, if, if you were to become Baron, how would you help make the, yep, how, how would you help make the Barony inclusive towards newcomers who might have difficulty connecting with others? And also longer members who may have disengaged from the SCA?
Long gone, eh? Try and eat, probably.
That's right.
And I'm just, um,
Yep. I'll just, what I'll do is I'll put the, the tech question into the chat box again, so it's there in text for you.
All right, it's going clear now.
Yep. Okay, so can you see in the?
Yes.
Yep, I've got the, that, that was the, the first question of the night. So if you would,
Yes.
If you have any, anything you'd like to speak to on that.
Well, we're, we're going, hey, let me, you know, slow down. You should do. Well, what do we do, what do we do to enhance newcomers? As many to what about, so I don't know. Except, colleges are doing well, but in the beginning, we didn't have them. So he's just, he's just talked about it and got people interested. Their friends, uh, conventions. They're, 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 they're gone now. Sadly. Originally, I got, when the Galaxy, they had the Galaxy Bookshop. In, it'd been, cities in the city of the right, right, first come, the, the SCA. I hadn't heard of them before then. And it was a while before I knew where they're going at, was it like when? No, I was there and they said, I've all gone to Rowaney. I said, what's that? I said, it's a pistol. Right, okay. And I went to the next one. And so how I got in was they, you know, and associated, associating with these people. In front of people, yeah, they were a highly intelligent group. And we all, we had dinner. So I just run off. And well, how they feel about it now, it's like, it's just, it's true, we have to find a decent way and we can advertise. I wouldn't think. Yeah, that, that wouldn't work. But oh, I haven't either. I've got no real thought, thought idea, to be honest.
Not a problem. Move on to the next one, which was.
Well, in Britain, there's a like, like, no one knew any of that them. It's, I would be acting, but they're, they're not publicized, they're not. But no one knew who they were. I said, I like, I like to, was a red down on this.
Yep. Okay, so one of the other questions that we had tonight was that in Rowaney, there's often this idea that if you have an idea, but you can't necessarily follow through on the doing of that idea, then it may not be supported. How would you help people who may have these ideas, but may not be physically capable of following through with all of the, the physical side of carrying out the ideas? How would you help support them within the Barony?
Evening. What we did, when we did events, they were with public. Yeah, we find a, a good place to buy one, just go ahead and, and like, I got six commissions, two commissions. I go ahead with it and it's like, and people, people would come and watch and say, oh, it's interesting. And we have people like we do now. Have people, you can talk to them about different subjects that they may be interested in. And you get, and you get the, the particular subject. And they go from there. Right, right, they. Actually, yeah, maybe, some people just like facing. Yeah, this, yeah, we, we have some great cooks in that. And just little things like that and it builds. It builds up. Eight o'clock already. And so, that's it. I didn't observe it. I mean, I was probably doing it as, as, as the rest of us were. But you don't notice what you're doing. Until you're like, well, you're good. You're going, you're going, you're going, just we got done to ask these members. All of a sudden, shut up. And it was quite a mess. And as well, everything is better again.
Okay, I might move on to another one of the questions that we've had tonight, which was, what are some ways that you think you would be able to be approachable to people who are more shy or introverted? Where they would be able to ask you for help or assistance without feeling like they are a burden?
Can I have it in?
So how, how, how would you help those people who are a bit more shy? Without making them feel like they are, or, or be approachable to those sorts of people so that they don't feel like they are a burden?
Oh. Okay. Are you gonna? Find out who, who, who this is in fact. There's no way, there's no way of knowing, really, until you talk to people. And that's, that's what I like doing. You know, like, all right, that is not someone puzzled with her, but they generally have puzzled long with their face. And you got, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's kind of helping you. Yeah, the simple words, usually. And find out what, what, what's going on, what they like to do. And say, it's, it's, you know, somebody who knows exactly what, what that is. And it's, oh, what you do, such and such. And it's always, that's always a good way of doing things. If you can. There's that.
Definitely, definitely. Okay. Had a couple more questions come through in the chat for all candidates. So I'll roll with the first one here. The Baron of Rowaney, like many large Baronys, often has vacancies for various baronial officer positions at times. If you are unsuccessful at becoming Baronage, which baronial office do you think you would be most likely to apply for?
I'd win against it.
Uh, you can go first if you like, Will Sitch.
I didn't hear you.
Oh, uh, so if you are unsuccessful as Baron, is there an officer position in Rowaney that you feel you would be best suited for?
This is a lot, a lot more officers than, than I remember. Oh yeah, is it like? I haven't, I haven't, it's been a long time. But this, this, like, you can't have offices, everything, everything. They do, maybe it's too, too complex for people, I think. Take basic interests. You make me think. And grow on them. Yeah, like, I, I went around and ran a festival. I sort of like, I sort of, I remember you doing it. And I said, my, and the idea was find out what was going on, what they, what they thought. And they say, like, we didn't have enough, so I says, huh? And they said, I'm going to town, I can get it for you. I was right, okay. Things like that. Yeah, they all want, want to get involved. If they, if they play a part of the, the power of the object, they enjoy it more. I'm sure if you find out someone's good, someone, you say, oh, I, I've heard you're a really good cook. Could you do this? And they go, oh yeah, that's a, I found that a lot. So they got, they got a lot of good. And I go, we're running two feast, feast at, at festival at this stage. One on the Saturday, one on the Sunday. And now that's, and now, now it seems to be disconnected. What I say is that all groups go their separate ways. The big ones. And I think that's a completely good idea, personally, if you get it together. Makes sometimes you have to, have to have at least one good. One good, one good meeting for everybody.
Yep. All right, Juliana and Evan Gillett have their hand up, so I might throw to them for their answer for this question.
It's a great question. We applied for this because Seneschal and Reeve were just way too scary. But for me, I've already done the ANS Office and I would probably look towards either Trojan or the Baronial Marshal or Rapier Marshal. And do we even have a shadow lane at the moment?
That's, we, we use the term acquisitor in Rowaney for that one and that one's Scott.
Sorry, who?
Charlie, Scott.
Charlie, cool. Yeah, you.
Well, I've been, I've been a Seneschal, I've been a Herald, I've been, uh, been a chronicler, I've been, I haven't been in the Rapier Marshal at a local level, believe it or not. But I've also been treasurer for other groups and president and things like that. So kind of looking at it, I go, I really don't know. I'm kind of in the same boat. Seneschal and Reeve are just too scary at the moment for my, having done them just recently in other groups.
Sigvold and Eda.
Um, I think if I had to pick an officer role, I would probably want to put my hand up for Hospitaller. I just think that, you know, the opportunity sort of help engagement, help
All right.
with newcomers. I think that would be something that I would be very interested in putting my hand up for. It's not, not trying to steal your job, oh, well, sorry.
For, for my part, as much as a group Rapier Marshal would be a, a joy, we already have such a wonderful Rapier Marshal in the form of Jude in the chat, and it would be a bit awkward reporting to myself at both a group and kingdom level. So for me, the, I've, I've held a number of baronial roles and college roles and, and king of roles and so on and so forth. I've never been a Herald. I've never formally been the, the Herald. I adore court and field heraldry and I'm helping, and slowly over the years, learning a little bit more about, you know, book heraldry and heraldic registrations and they're helping either at the moment register your heraldry. So we're, you know, at events already, so always willing, regardless of, of how this goes, always willing to, to help out. Be the, the voice of the, of the thrones.
Alrighty, whilst I've got Sigvold and Eda, this one is a question particularly for you. Something that was addressed, I think, in the last town hall, but hasn't been this time round. So as you are currently residents of Politicopolis, what are your motivations for wanting to be Baron and Baroness of Rowaney? And how often do you think you would be in Rowaney?
Um, so we are actually mostly involved in Rowaney for SCA things. We're up all the time. My family lives in Rowaney. They live in Parramatta. Your mum's in Sydney as well. So we come up all the time to visit them. It's very easy for us to, you know, visit friends and also engage with the Barony. We're coming up this weekend. We're going to a Stowe Tavanelia event and we're also planning on going to Dens Park on Sunday for a bit. And we were up the other weekend. We'll be up, but again, very shortly, I'm sure. You know, we try and make it to as many Rowaney events as we possibly can because most of our friends are in Rowaney, our family's in Rowaney. It's, we find it very easy to get there. And so when we, and because we've in the past been primarily involved in Rowaney, you know, we're from Rowaney originally, when we saw this opportunity come up. And we thought, well, why not? You know, we are involved. This is where we're from. This Barony has given a lot to us and we'd like the opportunity to give something back.
It, it really is about that sort of giving back, like Rowaney is our SCA home. We just don't live physically in it at the moment. In, in terms of how often and how frequently we intend to come up, it would be basically every event that Rowaney or Stowe holds, if we're, if we're physically able, as you know, all candidates have it. Unfortunately, we all have that caveat at the moment, not, not being independently wealthy. But we, I, I would, I'd like to come up every Dens Park and then the, the fighter practice after that is our current plan on top of the, um, absolute minimum. On top of all the Rowaney events that, and still events that take place in the college events as well.
So just as a supplemental to that, so we're mostly looking at weekends and also Monday night fighter practices where, where possible.
Yeah, oh yeah, well, back in those days, I was a, I actually, I should have put that, put the, political, this one's, this was twice a month. I was sharing with, I was sharing with, I was sharing with ass with, with Rowan, so I wasn't ever, uh, it was political, uh, all, all through its beginning. And I saw my those down there for a while, good, yeah, they're that was down there for a while, good, yeah, then there. I've probably have an awful lot, but then, not, not, not so much now. Because that, it does, doesn't, it does get you.
Yep.
Everyone will have this.
Um, so. Yep, sorry, I think Sigvald and you are about to answer that one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Yeah, I just, just as that summary, I think it would be every event that we can. The dense parks and A and S on the Mondays, we'd also like to, fight a practice on Monday, sorry. We'd also like to occasionally get up, you know, there's, there's the college events, you know, midweek and Stowe, when it goes back to, to physical meetings.
Obviously, that's a bit harder, obviously, because we break work full time, but we're, we're, yeah, when we can, you know, we haven't been able to be as involved as we'd have liked, just because, you know, travel between Sydney and Canberra during COVID. But, but, you know, there's no longer that restriction, that barrier that's preventing us from being involved and you know, it just, even, even if we weren't going through this specific process, that's something that we'd be trying to get more involved in, just because that's what we enjoy and that's what our plans have been from Roney, Roney's RCA home.
Yeah, how do you do your, your archery? How often do you do that?
We're in the midst of getting that back up, but that's at least a monthly one at the moment, or we were, we were hoping to get back to monthly and that. Um, okay. This one, a question for all candidates. There are a lot of different reenactment groups out there. Medieval, pre-medieval, I suppose you could call some of them, post-medieval or some other ones. Do you think it's a good idea to coordinate more with those other groups? And if so, how could we do that?
Well, I mean, I go to my archery twice a week. I hadn't dropped much, but I had a good, and I do chat to people about combat archery, that's all my little girl, eyes light up, but me thought of it. I said, this is you like to come along? I think, I think she, she came along. She's very fast and very accurate, she was amazing, she was, she was drawing out like it would be the speed you would believe. And being, and being on target. They say her eyes, they're just, what? There is such a thing? Hey, that's, 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 that's a lot of things, people don't know there is such a thing. That's just one way.
Very much so. Sigvald and Ida.
But I hear you.
Sorry, sorry, we were just taking a second to unmute. So one of the things that I think would be, obviously, I, it's not something I'd really thought of before, but it's a very interesting idea. But some of the more, you know, specific period reenactment groups, I actually imagine that they have a lot of knowledge and skills that it'd be really interesting to sort of engage with them from a learning perspective of arts and sciences, like, you know, if they're working to specific periods and to specific period standards, that would be really interesting to sort of, you know, see if they would be willing to share that sort of knowledge with people in Roney who would be interested. As just a way of expanding our skills and our knowledge base and resources and people that we can reach out to if we want to learn more about various things. I, that's just the first thing that comes to mind. Again, it's not really something I thought about, but it's a very interesting idea.
Um, I'm gonna just partially probably still live in Jalal's thunder a little bit, that we've got a person in, in this chat who, who I think you could describe does period and post-period reenactment with the Staccata fencing group and getting the two Juliana teachers as well. There's where we can get that sort of group involved, there's a, I think it's the gunnings sword fair or, or, or event that's coming up quite soon, and that's the kind of thing where we can get, you know, SCA fences there at Wood Fair stuff in Brisbane, those kind of things, but also we've done some metal weapons, sorry, we've done some demo work with metal weapons groups before, and it's gone really, really well, particularly from a recruitment, from a crowd perspective. JC, I think you were on the field where we had a metal weapons versus SCA shield wall with a rope in between the two groups, so that technically we were on different ropes in the insurance hell.
Oh, great.
Working, working with those kind of, sorry, we just have a chaos cat at the moment in the background. Working with those kind of other groups from a recruitment perspective, and, you know, we don't do everything they do, they don't do everything we do, why not work with them, not just at demos, but bring those skills across, as Eider said. Helping people find a, find a home from both sides.
Yeah. Well, that, that was, actually it was in the beginning, it's, that's where to start. But now, it's ridiculous. And everything was like, and pretty much, and, and sort of like, it was light armor, but it was all safe. We never had a single accident in, in, in the new year, as I remember, as principal, as principal of the archer. There were no, there were no injuries. Yeah, we covered it nicely. That's what I.
Ilya, Ibn Jalal and Juliana, where I'm putting people's names together, I'm sorry.
It's not the worst mashup I've had, so.
I remember hiring him as a branch in.
Yeah, well, that's just it, it's, we actually do have SCA members that go across lots of different groups. Um, you know, I've gone across at least three groups that I can think of. We actually have peers that play in the SCA and in the, some of the other reenactment groups, because they can actually play focus in that area. And I think that's where Eider's right, is that they are skills that, and we do actually have situations where those skills are being taught across the different groups, where they're reaching out and we're reaching out to them to actually teach those skills. There was a tradition where we used to actually invite those groups to our feasts, and I don't think that's happened in decades.
No, it's great, it's great, because they're, they're a really good part of.
Yeah, so, you know, that's something else we could possibly consider is if we actually are running a larger event, we could look at putting the invitation out and saying, hey, you guys are welcome to come.
We got two guys, but he doesn't do, he doesn't do much of the SCA area or anywhere, he lost interest.
There's, um, there's actually a group down in Campbelltown, it's the Sword Play Group. And they, prior to COVID, would come to every second festival for quite some time. And a couple of them even authorized in SCA Rapier and would join us on the field. But we haven't seen them for a while due to COVID. Even at public shows, it's not uncommon for that particular group to come and see Staccata. Because Staccata and Sword Play traditionally will take the show field one after the other. And someone will be left behind in order to look after the other one's stand. So that's just coordination outside of the SCA between across groups. I'm often left on Sword Play Stand, they give me their play sheet, I talk to them, you know, do all of those things. But equal, I've done that for the SCA as well, when there have been times where the tent has been left for a reason. And someone has to stay behind, so getting to know our fellow reenactors from different groups is really quite important for all areas. If anything, it just fosters relationships. I know where there are groups that us as a group of the SCA don't reach out, but there are other groups that I can put people in touch with, and just knowing those people across the groups really helps to build a really strong relationship.
Yes, it's good. And we had, we had backup, backup army, so like, this is there, there was, I just wanted to, I wanted to, I wanted to, Rangers. And there he's on, that's us. I mean, that was, they were fun times.
Okay, being mindful of the time and seeing that we're approaching the 19 minute mark. Again, I'm going to do just one sort of final call for questions, for anyone who would like to have a, a verbal question rather than having it typed out and read out by me, just please raise your hand. Okay, I think we're good, so I think we'll wrap it up there for this evening. Thank you, everybody, for your time, thank you to the candidates for your, your time and your, your answers to the questions. Thank you to everyone who attended this evening and for your very well thought questions. I hope everybody has a great rest of their evening. Thank you.